I am David Vitale, President of the Board of Education. And on behalf of my fellow board members, I welcome you to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is December 18th of 2013, and we are holding this month's meeting in the board chambers at 125 South Clark. We will follow our regular order of agenda for today. So Madam Secretary, would you please lead us in the pledge of...
Thank you, Mr. President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The regular meeting of Wednesday, December 18th, 2013, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Beenan?
Here.
Dr. Hines?
Here.
Vice President Reese?
Here.
Board members up?
Here.
Dr. Escoitia?
Present.
Board member Quazo?
Here.
President Vitale?
Here.
Seven members present. There is a quorum. I would also like to recognize Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett, our Chief Executive Officer, Mr. James Bebley, our General Counsel, Ashley Gordon, our Honorary Student Board Member, and Sierra Howard, our Shadow Student this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. At this time, I would like to ask Ashley to introduce our Shadow Student for today. Good morning, Ashley, and would you please introduce Sierra?
Thank you, Mr. President. This month, we have Sierra Howard, a senior from Limbloom Math and Science Academy, joining me as December's Shadow Student. Ms. Howard is Limbloom's local school council student representative and is a member of the Go Green Environmental Club. She tutors students at Limbloom, and she also tutors a student who attends Urban Prep. After graduation, Sierra plans to pursue a bachelor's degree in psychology to help prepare for her medical school. Sierra is a finalist to be a Posse Scholar at Pontomac College.
Thank you, Sierra. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you. I would like to thank the Board for allowing me to be here today as a Shadow Student. I would also like to give a very special thank you to my Principal, Mr. Alan Mather, for allowing me this great experience during the school day. It is such a pleasure to be here, and I look forward to the insight I will gain today. I am eager to learn new things that I can share with my community, school, and family. Thank you once again.
Thank you, Sierra, and it's great to have you. You know, if you've had the chance to chat a little bit with Sierra like I did earlier today, you'll know that there's no way that Posse or Pomona can turn her down. So, we look forward to successful completion of that application process to Sierra. I know it'll go well for you. Thank you. This morning, in tune with the holiday season and with the recognition of the recent death of Nelson Mandela, who passed away, as you know, a couple of weeks ago at the age of 95, we have some music this morning to recognize those events. So, we're going to start this morning with the Kenwood Academy Choir, who is here for a special musical performance to pay tribute to the life of Nelson Mandela. I want to thank you for coming down today, and I want to thank Jessie, who heard them perform this experience and suggested that we bring them here today. So, thanks, Jessie, and thank you all for coming.
Good morning. We are the Kenwood Academy Concert Choir Magical Ensemble, and we will be performing a song in tribute to Nelson Mandela. Thank you.
(SINGING) "Mandela..." 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 "Mandela..."
Thank you. Thank you very much. And their Principal Greg Jones is here who supports them, and the choir director has worked with a lot of great students, including some named Jennifer Hudson. Where are you, Greg? Raise your hand. Good to see you. Great job. And thank you, students, really. Such an appropriate tribute to a really inspirational world leader. It's really moving, and then to move us into the holiday season of the second number, we really are on a roll here, and we have an opportunity to keep going with the festivities of the season, because we are fortunate to have with us the Lane Tech Orchestra Quintet, who will perform with us, but also the Lane Tech Jazz Band. So, let's start with the string quartet first.
On behalf of the Lane Tech Quartet, we are playing "Rondo" by Murray. Thank you.
Thank you.
(SINGING) 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 Hi, we are the Lane Tech Jazz Combo, and we're going to be playing "Have Yourself a Merry Little Christmas," which will feature the lovely Lita Renta ensemble. (LAUGHING) (APPLAUSE) Is that all right? Two loud? Quiet? (SINGING) 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 (SINGING)
So I want you to, I want you to meet the true leader of this band. Principal Christopher Dingmas. Where are you, Chris? So to all of you students, thank you very much. It's really quite extraordinary. It's a great way for us to start our meeting, particularly at this time of year. And we really do appreciate it. And to you two principals for bringing this out and our students, congratulations. It's a great job. You know, we are committed to improving arts programs in the, throughout the city, both elementary and high school. And you've set terrific examples today for what it can mean for our children and what they can provide us. So I just want to thank you so much.
Yeah, I want to start with, can you hear me? Yeah, I want to start with Ken Wood. Wow. Just incredibly beautiful. And actually, it was very, very emotional. And I thank you so much. You carry your instruments in your, in your body, in your throat. And I thank you so much. And to Alan. Wow. Just spectacular. And the young, I whispered to the general counsel, the young man on the keyboard, who are you? I love you. Just the entire band, you are absolutely wonderful. And we are so very proud of you. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you all. Thank you very, very much. Okay, we now have to do some business. So we'll proceed with the business portion of the meeting. And I'll turn it over to Barbara for the CEO's report.
Thank you so much, President Vitale and members of the Board of Education. I almost feel as though I should sing this report to you. It's just incredible. Today, there are approximately 60,000 of our children in Chicago who are currently not enrolled in school. And I've called these children our lost children because the adults have not been able to find them. And I believe that it's our collective responsibility to find them, to reengage them, and to get them back onto a path of success. Chicago Public Schools will never give up on any child. The alternative for the future of our children as individuals and the future of the city of Chicago is not one that any of us should be willing to accept the fate of these children. And that is why I made reengaging the off-track students a priority in our five-year action plan. And it is also why we have already opened three new reengagement centers in Garfield Park, Roseland, and Little Village. And it is why we will work to add new, high-quality option seats for our children across the district in the future. This morning, I want to recognize an essential partner in this work, the team from Youth Connections Charter Schools, or YCCS. Over the past five years, YCCS has re-engaged and graduated more than 5,000 students. This heroic effort has not only transformed the lives of students and their families, it has created a stronger city for all of us. YCCS has worked to improve its students' attendance rate. And students' attendance is one of the most important indicators of student engagement, especially for those students who have been disengaged. Our new school quality rating policy is one of the first in the nation to include option schools. And YCCS was a strong partner in the development of this policy. And as a result, we presented a comprehensive coordinated policy that will continue to increase our capacity to serve and to reengage the students of our community who have been lost over the next five years. To Sheila Vensen, who is with us here today, and the YCC team, I offer my sincerest thanks and appreciation for your willingness and the work that you have done with us so far and the journey that we will continue to take as we move on. I thank you for your partnership. And Sheila, I don't know if you'd like to say a few words?
I just wanted to say, thank you for this recognition. And I also want to thank Jesse Ruiz for helping us with our contract. And I also want to thank the teachers, the 650 teachers, the 20 principals, many, some are here today, the 4,000 students, and the 15,000 graduates that we graduated since 1997. So 15,000. So I want to thank everybody for this moment.
I want to, I probably need stronger glasses. I apologize. That is not five, it is 15,000. Thank you so very much. President Vitale, members of the Board of Education, since 2009, Chicago Public Schools has reduced the central office workforce by 34 percent. As a result, today, we are operating in more space than we need. And just as we address the challenge of underutilized schools and classrooms, we must also address the underutilization that exists right here at our central office. Both the underutilization of schools and the underutilization of central office have stretched our limited resources. We could not continue to throw money after half-empty schools. And as such, and likewise, we can no longer afford to support a half-empty building here at 125 South Clark. As a result, I directed my team earlier this year to examine relocation options for Chicago Public Schools Central Office. And I'm pleased to announce that after careful consideration of 86 options throughout the city of Chicago, we are prepared to bring forth a recommendation in closed session to relocate the central office. All of the properties included in the search, I am, out of all of the properties included in the search, I am confident that the one we have found has the lowest-cost alternative and that this recommendation will result in significant cost savings for Chicago Public Schools over the status quo. These savings will help us to maintain critical spending that we need in our schools and in our classrooms, and will protect student learning as we continue to work to address our structural deficit. Relocating central office is a more efficient, less expensive, into a more efficient and less expensive space is the right thing to do. And it is also the responsible thing to do for the taxpayers of Chicago. I'm confident that this proposal will help bring Chicago Public Schools to our utilization challenges and will continue to help us with our financial challenges so that we can maintain the critical investments that support our children each day in schools and in classrooms. And finally, Mr. Vitale, President Vitale, I would like to introduce Chicago Public Schools' General Counsel, James Bebley, to our public and for him to provide a brief overview on the proposed amendment to CPS investment policy, which is on the agenda today. Mr. Bebley?
Thank you, Madam CEO. Mr. President, we have one policy. That is 13-1218-PO1 amends the board's investment policy to expand allowable investments to include corporate commercial paper and extend the maximum allowable maturity date of such investments from 180 days to 270 days. It also expands the allowable municipal securities investments by adjusting the required rating threshold consisting with, consistent with the city's policies and the State Public Funds Act, and clarifies that the definition of municipal investment-bearing bonds and municipal debt obligations includes commercial paper, notes, tax anticipation warrants, and other debt obligations of municipalities. The Chief Financial Officer recommends approval of this proposal.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you, James. Does that conclude your report, Barbara?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Again, I would just remind everybody that the board continues to offer office hours. And we are pleased to make this opportunity available to the public. Anybody that would like to schedule office hour time with board members should call 773-553-1600 and schedule some time with us. We look forward to seeing you. Madam Secretary, would you please share the details of the next board meeting?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next boarding, board meeting will be held on January 22nd, 2014. Advanced registration will open at 8:00 a.m. Monday, January 13th, 2014, and will close on Friday, January 17th, 2014, at 5:00 p.m. or until all slots are filled, whichever is first. If anyone has any questions about this process, please contact the board office for assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now proceed with today's public participation session. We have the pleasure of having several public officials with us today. And I'm going to welcome them to start our meeting. And I always have a challenge of what the appropriate order should be for people to come up. So I'm going to go random, if that's okay with our guests. And start with Alderman O'Shea, if he's here. Is he here?
I apologize for holding up the line.
That's okay.
Good morning, Dr. Bert Bennett, President Vitale, distinguished members of the board. And thank you for allowing me the opportunity this morning to speak on behalf of Morgan Park High School. I'm here today asking for your support for the expansion of the International Baccalaureate Program at Morgan Park High School. This is something my community has been working towards for nearly two years. And I can't tell you how excited we are to even be here today discussing it with you. Wall-to-wall IB has been thoroughly explored and researched, not only by the faculty and staff at Morgan Park, but also the local school council, parents, and members of the entire community. We all feel that this shift will have a tremendous impact on the future of Morgan Park High School. For my tenure as alderman, Morgan Park has existed in a leadership vacuum. I don't know if all of you are aware, but for 21 months, we operated without a principal. Despite the best efforts of a dedicated faculty and CPS support, we lost our way during that period. With me today is a woman responsible for beginning that turnaround. In nine short months, she has made tremendous progress in changing the climate on campus and working to get us back on track. Dr. Carolyn Epps is someone who truly understands how children think and learn. She is a dedicated leader, a consummate professional, and someone I am proud to not only have as our principal, but as a friend. Her agenda is simple. She wants Morgan Park to realize its full potential, to prepare our students for college and all the challenges and hurdles they'll encounter along the way. After several meetings with Dr. Epps, the local school council, parents, and community members, we are all here today speaking with one voice, united in our belief that expanding the international baccalaureate program is the best way to achieve that goal. Morgan Park faces the same challenges and hurdles most other urban, public high schools face. Unfortunately, there's no easy answer to transform a school overnight. But I believe the best thing we can do for our students is to expect more of them, to not lower standards. We should create an atmosphere where children are expected to go to college, they're expected to succeed. And if we expect this from them, maybe, just maybe, they'll begin to expect it from themselves. They can begin to picture themselves in a college or in a university thriving. That, to me, is what an IB program offers. And that's what I want for the children of Morgan Park High School, the children of my community. To complement this new curriculum, we've enlisted the help of St. Xavier University. In the coming months, I hope to announce a formal partnership between the two schools. The involvement of St. Xavier is another critical piece that will help students realize that they can and will go on to college. St. Xavier is committed to providing professional development and support to the Morgan Park faculty and have direct interaction with the students through some dual enrollment programs, service learning trips, and much more. Currently, Morgan Park High School falls under the purview of the Office of Strategic School Support Services. Say that three times really fast. Tracy Martin and her team are doing excellent work. I really cannot say enough about Tracy. She and Dr. Epps have worked closely together, working on completing a thorough evaluation of the school, its strengths, its weaknesses, and opportunities for growth. By combining the work that OS4 has and will continue to do with an innovative new curriculum and an additional influx of resources from St. Xavier, we have a unique opportunity to significantly impact the future of Morgan Park and see immediate growth. With your support today, we will start Morgan Park High School on a new, on a new path towards a brighter future. Morgan Park will be a Level One high school. And when that happens, Dr. Epps and I will be back here to thank each and every one of you. Before I go, I'd also like to thank you for your past investments in our school. Over the last two years, we completed a $21 million facilities upgrade, and that building is looking better than ever. Also, I'd like to thank you, Dr. Bert Bennett, for your tremendous efforts on behalf of the students. You came into a system that was in total chaos, made great strides in calming the waters, and getting back to the business of educating our children, something we all need to support, spend more time doing. You've assembled an outstanding team who I've truly enjoyed working with. And I'd like to name just a few. I know I'm going to forget some. Sherri Ulri, Mai T. Hamilton, Artie Dupelia, Tracy Martin, and Lindy McGuire. They do great work, and more often than not, they don't get the credit they deserve. Thank all of you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you for taking the time to come down and show your commitment to our students. We really appreciate it, and we look forward to the success that you and Dr. Epps and everybody are going to have at Morgan Park. And good luck.
Thank you very much.
And we're going to be behind you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, Alderman Smith.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Members of the Lincoln Elementary family up here today to once again ask for your support and ask for your vote on today's agenda item in favor of the annex for Lincoln Elementary School. Overcrowding at Lincoln Elementary for many years has now threatened the high quality of education on which the parents of Lincoln Park rely. Maintaining the highest-performing neighborhood school in the city of Chicago is critical for the students today and tomorrow and our entire Lincoln Park community. Throughout the support that we have garnered from families enrolled at Lincoln, the need for this annex is at this point indisputable. I am afraid, I am somewhat embarrassed and astounded by those against this expansion would want to hinder the educational opportunities that are available for our own students and for future students of our community. Redrawing boundaries, as has been suggested, would force students out of this outstanding school and would adversely affect our other schools. And I don't feel that I'm in a position, nor is our community in a position, to decide which students in our own community should go to one school or another. Over the last few months, I have heard various appointment opponents suggest so-called alternative solutions. Every single one of them involved displacing some other child or changing the character of some other school. But my job and our job is to provide for all the children of our community and, of course, the entire city. This expansion will allow for our student achievement to prosper by updating an outdated, an outdated building and getting the kids out of the cloakrooms, the hallways, and the boiler rooms that they have been taught in for the past several years. It will allow us to keep our very successful K-8 program in one building and allow us to keep our wonderful, all of our programming, from our band to our French language to our international gifted program. Once more, I would like to thank the parents who keep on showing, keep on showing up, the Board of Education, and Mayor Emanuel for all of your hard work. This could not have been accomplished without the 1,300 people who have continued to show their support, parents, community members, former parents, and parents-to-be that have called, emailed, testified, and met to advocate for the expansion of this school, and to the Chicago Public School staff and board who have worked with the parents and the local school councils for well over two years specifically to come up with the best solution among many that were vetted and exhaustively researched. Our community has proved through hard work, collaboration, and determination that we can find a solution to maintain Lincoln's premier level of education. Now with every school in a dense urban community, every school, there are issues involving traffic, site choices, and trade-offs. And as with every school in our community, I certainly pledge as alderman that we will work our way through those issues. Every single school in our community has traffic issues and drop-off issues, and we just plow through them one at a time, and we'll do that here. And I pledge the community that any issue arising from this wonderful addition, we'll just work it right through. But I remain overjoyed for the Lincoln Elementary families and students and toddlers in the neighborhood. And I'm most proud of the commitment of the parents and community members who advocated for this expansion. This addition will ensure that Lincoln Elementary will continue to be the Lincoln we all know and love, a school where parents, families, and the community can continue to grow under one roof. With your support of this annex, the community can move forward and put this issue behind us and really let Lincoln be Lincoln Elementary. And I believe there are a couple of parents who want to add a few words. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman.
Members of the board, leaders of CPS, my name is Mark Sneeden. My wife and I have a three-year-old son. We've lived in the Lincoln neighborhood for, for over 12 years. And I just want to say that we very enthusiastically support the annex to solve the overcrowding at Lincoln. I'm just going to give you a few reasons why. So one is that our neighborhood is crawling with families with young children, and they moved to the neighborhood for the same reasons that we did, the excellence of Lincoln Elementary School. This annex and expansion will keep us in the neighborhood, it'll keep our, our friends and neighbors in the neighborhood, and keep us from, from moving to the suburbs. It's, it's really that simple. Number two, the annex expands on the number-one neighborhood elementary school in the state, in the state. We have a true gem in Lincoln Elementary School. This invests in success, and it maintains the curriculum and the great programs and involvement that helped make Lincoln the success that it is today. Number three, the expansion is the, is, this solution is supported by the vast majority of residents and parents, as evidenced by over 1,300 signatures in support, our alderman's wonderful support, a 10-to-2 vote by the local LSC in support of expansion of Lincoln, including the principal as well as all the teacher, teacher representatives, and support from the surrounding schools, including LaSalle and Alcott and Newberry, who didn't want a solution that impacted them negatively. And to that point, it's the only solution that was explored that did not significantly negatively impact other schools in our neighborhood and take away those highly coveted magnet seats at those schools that are also performing so well today. And then last, timing is key. Any delays in moving forward with the expansion is just one more year with kids being educated in hallways and boiler rooms and crossing busy streets to, to go to school at DePaul because Lincoln is as overcrowded as it is. So I just want to say thank you so much for all you do for our kids and your continued support of Lincoln Elementary School.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Trish Juarez, and I'm the parent of two primary-grade students at Lincoln Elementary. As a vocal supporter of the Lincoln Annex, I wanted to request the board vote to approve the annex and invest in traditional neighborhood schools. Schools are the backbone of a community's social structure. Investing in quality neighborhood public schools reinforces the child, family, community, and all of Chicago. Overcrowding is a broader CPS concern, and while I'm extremely grateful for Lincoln's annex, request the board reinforce quality public education by continuing to invest in traditional neighborhood schools in need of overcrowding relief, some of which are present today. Lincoln's ideal student enrollment is 630. However, our current enrollment is 817. And in January, after winter break, we will have 828 students. It should be highlighted that Lincoln's overcrowding situation is significantly compounded with two large real estate developments being constructed in the shadow of Lincoln Elementary. These developments will bring a potential 1,000-plus new residential units to the area and include low-income housing to enable broader access to Lincoln and the Lincoln Park community. The past few years have been very challenging for Lincoln, as we've experienced significant organic student growth, and we've worked to address Lincoln's future school enrollment demands due to the redevelopments. I am proud to be a parent of the Lincoln community that wants Lincoln Elementary to expand, not contract. And I'm confident the annex will enable more children to benefit from Lincoln's quality educational environment. My interest is not about taking away opportunities from children benefiting from the education they receive at surrounding schools. The argument that there is space, available space, is grossly incorrect, as creating room by removing someone else's child, in my view, is an extremely negative direction and outcome. My interest is not to alter Lincoln's curriculum or culture by removing programs created and supported by Lincoln's administration, teachers, and families. My interest is not about real estate values. My interest is not solely about my children, but for everyone's children. Lincoln is my priority, and my interest is to provide more access to Lincoln's high-quality education and plan for the growing needs of the entire Lincoln community. Thank you again for your support of neighborhood schools like Lincoln Elementary.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Alderman. I know you've worked very hard on this for a very long period of time and to bring this to our vote today. And we appreciate the effort of everybody that's been involved in this lengthy process to come to this conclusion. So thank you very much for coming today, and we look forward to a successful. Alderman Maldonado, good to see you.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. President. Congressman Danny Davis caught my attention as he was walking in. That's why I looked back.
We've been looking for him. I tell you, we've actually been looking for him. We've been, we actually have been expecting him.
Mr. President, President Vitale, distinguished members of the board, and Madam CEO Barbara Bert Bennett, thank you for allowing me the time to speak before you today on an issue that I feel very, very strongly about. I'm here to urge your vote in favor of opening the Marine Literature Academy at Ames, the first high school in the 26th ward that would give the youth of our community the best opportunity to go to college and succeed in life. Ames Middle School continues to be underutilized and faces chronic underenrollment. The statistics prove that it is not a popular choice for the parents and students of our community. Only 52% of students zoned to attend Ames for 7th grade this year chose Ames. Let me repeat, only 52% of the students zoned to attend Ames for 7th grade this year chose Ames. After more than a year of listening to community leaders, meeting on a one-to-one with parents and students, including parents and students from Ames, receiving letters of support from local school principals local school principals and clergy, and collecting over one thousand signatures on petitions from Ames-area residents, I have never been more certain that there is an overwhelming need and desire by the community to bring a quality high school to the ward, a high school that offers strong math and science courses and teaches our youth the values of community, citizenship, and responsibility. In an effort to scientifically verify, scientifically verify, community support for opening Marine Leadership Academy at Ames, a professional research firm conducted a poll that showed this expansion has the solid support of nearly seventy-two percent of the respondents. This poll was conducted among thirty, three hundred respondents, three hundred respondents comprising a representative sample of a target population of residents living around Ames. It is important to point out that the poll had a four percent margin of error, making the results very reliable. Four percent margin of error. Much of the opposition to Marine Leadership Academy at Ames is based on faulty perceptions and misinformation, contrary to what opponents have indicated. For students for which Ames will be their neighborhood middle schools, it should be noted that seventh graders will be automatically accepted if parents so choose. Second, the Marine Leadership Academy at Ames will not be a training ground for sending our children to enlist in the military when they graduate. Marine Leadership Academy does not engage in military recruiting and both the principal and the teachers are CPS employees and the teachers are CTA, CTU members. Although I am very sympathetic to and have great respect for the views of some war veterans who now serve the cause of world peace, it is simply not true that I promote militarization and violence by supporting Marine Leadership Academy at Ames. In fact, I have a track record of protesting military actions. I actively demonstrated in Vieques, Puerto Rico against the U.S. Navy's military exercises and its presence, and its presence in the town of, the town island of Puerto Rico, which I am proud to say successfully closed that military base. Clearly, I would never promote anything that would ultimately result in putting our youth in harm's way. I embrace the academic motto of Marine Leadership Academy at Ames, whose main goal is to prepare students for college and professional careers by providing an environment of structure, discipline, and a high expectation of academic performance. For example, the class of 2013 has a zero percent dropout rate compared to CPS average of five-point-eight percent, a ninety-five percent college acceptance rate with currently sixty-nine percent college bound, and students earning three-point-two million dollars in scholarships. As the Alderman of this ward and as a parent of three young children, I feel it is my duty and moral obligation to provide our children with a real opportunity to get the quality education in the Twenty-Sixth Ward. That is why, that is why I urge you, Mr. President, and members of the Board to vote in favor of the Marine Leadership Academy at Ames and give our youth the chance they deserve to succeed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Vossel?
Thank you, Mr. President, and Dr. Bennett and Board members. I, I'm here on behalf of my colleague. He asked me to come, to be here with him and support him. I served in the Marine Corps. I served in Vietnam. I have been a strong advocate of veterans and the military in this country in my tenure in government. I started out as Director of Veterans. I'm proud of that job. I'm proud of what I did for the city of Chicago regarding veterans and regarding those who serve this nation. My colleague, he asked me to come here and him and I, there's things we completely disagree on. We're probably spheres apart. However, on this issue, I will support him. I served in the Marine Corps and one of the reasons we're allowed to be here today are because men and women are serving this nation and allowing our nation to be free. That's something we must never, ever forget in this country and we have that right to say we disagree, to say we disagree on this issue. We have a right to say we support it, we're against it. The Marine Leadership Academy at Ames will be good. Again, as I said, I served in Vietnam. Now, let me say with the ROTC, I was on the ground floor of the Bronzeville Academy. Mayor Daley put me in there and had me work. Look at that academy now. It is a great public school. It is a great thing, the ROTC. We have the Air Force Academy in my ward. We have the Tilden Academy, the Tilden ROTC. If you look at the ROTCs, it is really good. If you look at the graduation rate, you have ninety-two percent attendance, eighty percent graduation, ninety percent college acceptance, scholars, scholarships totaling eighteen-point-three million dollars. The ROTC is a good program. I am proud to support it. And as far as the military, I have a son that's nineteen. If he wants to join the military, fine. If he doesn't, fine too. And it's the same with everyone else. It is an all-volunteer military now. And they don't, the military isn't going to indoctrinate people. This is a great program. Desire, discipline, dedication with the Marine Corps. And I'll close by saying what the Marines always say, "God bless America, semper fidelis", always faithful. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Mr. President, we have a few other speakers from the community.
Morning, members of the Board. Dr. Scogtian. I'm Reverend Walter Coleman. I'm the pastor of Alberto United Methodist Church in Humboldt Park and Lincoln United Methodist in Pilsen. And for the last period, the last two years, I've been, our church has worked along with Rush Medical Center to develop a program with, in five high schools, for high school students to work, to provide screening and preventive health care and chronic diseases and follow-up and also an introduction to careers. Probably the most successful program really has been at the two service academies, at the Marine Academy of Math and Science and at Phoenix, where in Marine Math and Science, we have the whole sophomore class involved in the program. We've had an opportunity to understand the service academy in a way that I never would have otherwise. This is a student-run institution. Discipline is based on student organization and is accepted by the students. We're not doing like we're doing at other high schools. We're not pushing people out. We're having students that are bringing people in. That accounts for the level of respect and discipline that's in the school because we look at students in these service academies as solutions, not as problems to be solved and they're meeting the cause. We have overcrowded situation there. We have two schools where the collective waiting list to get into those two schools, Phoenix and the Marine Military Math and Science Academy, is over twenty-five-hundred students. That's their first choice. They want to get in there. We don't have room to do it. We have an underutilized school at Ames and we have a community in which there is no service academy so that our people from our community don't have the access to go to a service academy in their neighborhood. We have plenty of space to do there. Secondly, we have a middle school that was created because there was overcrowding. I know a lot of people work very hard to build an organization around that middle school and to try to make it a success and they feel badly that some things are going to change in that model. But we have to learn that that middle school was created because of the overcrowding, which no longer exists. There's no longer that reason and the middle school model is not a good educational model. And in the long run, what we do and the decisions we make are not about adults, not about parents, but about what is good for the students. We have the opportunity to have a seven-through-twelve model, which is the model that we should have, that is focused around math and science, that is focused around college preparation, that has this unique form of student leadership and student development, which means that we're not getting dropout rates, we're not forcing students out, but that we're really developing leadership and which has service to the community as a concept above other things. I think this is a wonderful model. I understand why some people don't like change. I understand how some people have money and their organizations invested in receiving funds and so forth with the way the school that it is now. But our priority has to be the students, to give them this option. I'm sorry about the misinformation that has been let go in the community, that some people think, oh, the military's taken over this school and, and our kids are going to be forced out and blah, 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 which we know none of that is true. We also know that on the question of the military, that actually a smaller percentage of students from the Marine Math and Science go into the military than from Clemente or Juarez. They go into other areas, but they get the discipline and the leadership to succeed in those areas. Trust our young people. They're not going to be misled. They're not going to go crazy and do something stupid or get into something that, that we don't want them to get into. But they're going to be our future. Give them the chance. The thing that these leadership service academies do, whether it's Phoenix or the Marine Math and Science, the thing that they do is something that the rest of our high schools have to learn from because in the rest of our high schools, we have some wonderful students and we have some that we throw away and force out. But in those service academies, everybody comes in. That's because the students themselves develop the leadership to bring them in and I think that it's a model that we can learn from. It's a model that we want within the Twenty-Sixth Ward and in the Northwest Side. It's a model that our pastors support and we hope very much that the Board will make this relocation permitted today so that we don't, we can get about the business of actually bringing the community together around this new model. Thank you.
She's going to be speaking in Spanish.
Buenos dias. Yo soy madre de dos estudiantes de la escuela marine militar.
I'm a parent of two students at the Marine Math and Science Academy.
Yo vengo aquí porque quiero exponerles lo que a mí como padre me ha satisfacido, me ha beneficiado el que mis hijos estén en esa escuela militar.
I'm very satisfied and I came here to share with you as a parent why I am so pleased with the education at the Marine Math and Science Academy.
Mi hija cuando estuvo en el segundo año empezó a tener malas compañías, malas influencias, y lo cual motivó a bajar sus calificaciones.
My daughter in her second year began to hang around with, and was influenced by a different crowd and her grades began to fail because of it.
Gracias a la escuela, los maestros, a los coordinadores que me estuvieron mandando mensajes de que mi hija salía de la escuela, de mi hija llegaba tarde, no estaba presentando tareas, no estaba haciendo el trabajo que tenía que estar haciendo.
And because of the teachers, because of the faculty, because of the other students, my daughter, I was given the information that her grades were falling and that she was not arriving on time to school. She was leaving or she hadn't shown up to school. I was given all this information.
Los maestros trabajaron mucho con ella, las reglas de la escuela estuvieron duros con ella para que ella enderezara su camino. Gracias a eso, mi hija se graduó este año de la escuela militar. Fue en el grupo de los diez mejores de la escuela. Ella obtuvo el quinto lugar y salió con honores. Ella no pudo calificar para una beca del FAMSA porque ellas son dreamers, pero ella salió y está ahorita en un colegio y está con muy buenos grados. Y gracias a que los maestros y la escuela pucharon con éxito a mi hija.
Because of the discipline and because of the focus that they gave my daughter, my daughter graduated last year and on the honor roll, she was in the top ten. She actually took the fifth place. And unfortunately, she couldn't go to the university that she wished to go to because she's a dreamer, but she is in a college right now and she's doing very well thanks to the support, the discipline, and the faculty, the teachers, and the students of this high school that they were able to do that for her.
Mi hijo no era tan buen estudiante como mi hija, pero él se enamoró del uniforme de la escuela y él quería ir por el uniforme de la escuela. Ahora él está en segundo año y él es un líder de un grupo y él se ha hecho muy responsable. Él sale temprano, dos horas antes de casa para llegar puntual. Es una cosa que él aprendió de la escuela, la puntualidad, la disciplina en su, en su casa porque ahora ya limpia su cuarto, ya es ordenado, y es algo que a mí me ha beneficiado. Y pues también ha mejorado sus calificaciones de ser un alumno de D. Ahora ya tiene A, B, y C. Y me siento satisfecha y yo invito a los de la otra escuela que trabajemos juntos, que nos demos la oportunidad, que le den la oportunidad a sus hijos de que conozcan la escuela. No es una escuela militar para ir a luchar. Es un arte sí, que ellos van a aprender y que les va a gustar, que se den la oportunidad. Va a ser algo beneficioso para ellos y para nosotros, para que nuestros hijos expandan y puedan tener mejores servicios también ellos.
She's very happy to say that her son that is now a sophomore in the Marine Math and Science Academy, he was not doing well. He was not a good student before and he was not very interested, but he fell in love with the uniform, so he decided to come to this school.
That's cute.
He fell in love with the uniform and he decided to go to this school and because he's in this school, they gave him more responsibility, they gave him more discipline, and he has become such a responsible individual. He has changed from being a D student to an AB student. He is more responsible. He leaves the home two hours early to make sure he's always on time. Punctuality has become a discipline for him. He's responsible at home. He cleans his room, he makes his bed. I have benefited from his responsibility and what the school can teach him and I want to share this with the parents at Ames School because we can all benefit from them. Let's work together. Let's all benefit from what these children can learn and what they can teach us.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Por favor, los alumnos no son el problema, son la solución. Ayúdenos, por favor, para que ellos se puedan expandir.
Our children are not the problem. Our children are the solution. So help us, help us so that we can expand, so that we can make this happen.
Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jolene Lozano. I am a resident of the Logan Square neighborhood and as a community member, I am not in favor of downtown coming into our neighborhood and making decisions without the support or without the consent of the neighborhood. However, that is not the case with this situation. We approached our Alderman in the Twenty-Sixth Ward and asked for this opportunity for our young people. I live with my sister and my niece and we both work full-time jobs and I spend two hours every day with my niece on her homework. I'm her tutor, but even after that, she's still struggling with her grades. She needs the support and structure that this school can offer her. We want to give options to our students. We want them to have the option to go to a school that gives them higher graduation rates or a school that has higher amounts of students going to college. So this is an opportunity that we're really excited and hope that you vote in favor of. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you to both of you, Alderman, for coming down and addressing us in person. We appreciate the time and commitment you've put into it and the work you put into your ward in helping us improve education. We really do appreciate the time you've taken on this and the other issues. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Happy holidays to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And at this time, I'd like to call a couple of other speakers.
First, Representative Davis. Did I hear you here? Representative Davis, welcome and thank you for joining us this morning and thank you for your service to Chicago, back there in Washington. Appreciate having you here.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President, Dr. Bennett, all of the members of the Board, all of the distinguished individuals who are here to try and be involved in public policy decision-making, which is not always the easiest thing in the world to do. I'm pleased to follow the distinguished group. I've been following Alderman Maldonado for a long time. I've been following Alderman Maldonado for a long time and watching Alderman bounce with what he has done in relationship to military engagement, involvement, what it means in this country. But I'm here on behalf of the By the Hands Organization, which has applied for a charter. And I know that there are many friends of mine and many individuals that I've worked with over the years and continue to work with. As a matter of fact, I have been a member of the Chicago Teachers Union. I taught in the Chicago Public School System for six years at a special school for disadvantaged children. I've been fortunate to teach everything from kindergarten to graduate school in many different places throughout the country. I have a little bit of understanding of what the issues are, and one of the big issues is the whole question of how do we generate enough resource to educate every child in the United States of America so that he or she will have optimal opportunity for advancement and to live the kind of life that he and she deserve and that this country stands for. Of course, there are times when you make decisions, you have to decide what it is that you're going to do. I was also pleased to follow Reverend Slim Coleman, he mentioned his name Walter, we've always known him as Slim, a guy who went to Harvard, but, um, I'm not a member of his church, but I go to church. And I am a member of the New Galilee Missionary Baptist Church that is very much engaged and very much involved with the By the Hands Organization. I'm, I'm very much aware of the leadership of both entities and what they not only bring, but they have already brought to the community. I'm aware of, of, of their philosophy, their desire. And I know that faith is oftentimes an integral part of children's desire to learn. I used to teach Sunday School when I was fifteen years old. I actually started teaching when I was nineteen years old. And I gave a commencement address on Friday at a historically black college and university. And I noticed that many of the young people who were graduating really wanted to go into education, really that's what they, that was the biggest group. And yet, I'm not sure that they're going to be the opportunities for them to actualize their dreams. There are some things that obviously all of us are concerned about. I'm concerned, for example, in the last ten years or more, I've seen a diminution of African-American teachers in the city of Chicago. I'm saying there aren't as many now as there were back when I was teaching, that's been a long time. All of those factors, I think, contribute to the ultimate decisions that get made. But bottom line, with everything that is said and done, I do believe that this charter, with the leadership and the interaction of the leadership from my church, that the pastor is seriously involved, and I know that the accountability will be present and enhanced. And so I would ask that the By the Hand Organization be granted the opportunity to display the kind of leadership and direction they have already demonstrated and what they're capable of doing. And I would ask that Ms. Ruth Kimble be given an opportunity to make a comment relative to people and parents, students that she represents.
Good morning, President of the Board, Robert Bird Bennett. My name is Ruth Kimble, I'm the founder and executive director of Austin Child Care Providers Network. Our mission is to educate and train childcare providers in underserved communities. We have a fifteen-year history of providing resources and services for a network membership of eighty licensed and center-based daycare programs, providing care for over twelve hundred children. Parents bring their children to us and they feel confident that we will educate and nurture them. Childcare providers wear many hats and our parents rely on us to provide them with information on the next steps for their child's transition from daycare, pre-K, to kindergarten. When we learned about a possible new school and approached our parents about it, they were happy to partner with the Chicago Education Partnership. Our parents understand that children will benefit from an educational program that provides the holistic care and wraparound services provided by the Chicago Education Partnership. The more we learn about the school's vision, the more eager parents became to see this school approved. That is why I stand here before you as a representative of the vast network of parents and providers we serve to let you know that it's imperative that we approve the Child Chicago Education Partnership Charter. Thank you so much for listening, happy holidays.
Thank you, Ms. Kimble.
And if that's it, let me just say, Mr. President and, and Dr. Bird, I actually had a book for both of you, and I forgotten left it in the car, but I will get it to you, it's a book titled Willie Lee. And I have noticed that you're making serious movement towards implementing a state law that Senator William Shaw was able to introduce and get passed in the legislature. And I, I, I want both of you to have this little book that I ran into called Willie Lee, and I will get it to you before Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Davis, and we appreciate your coming, uh, here today and, and we certainly appreciate your advocacy for investing in our children everywhere. Uh, we look forward to continuing to work with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll continue with additional speakers regarding Ames, and at this time I would like to call up Speaker number eight, Delia Bonilla, followed by Speaker number fifteen, please, Emma Segura. Ms. Delia Bonilla, please, Speaker number eight.
Uh, muy buenos dias, eh, señor Vitali, señora Barbara Petne, buenos dias a toda la junta de educación. Mi nombre es Delia Bonilla y gracias por dejarme expresar.
My name is Delia Bonilla, thank you for allowing me to speak to you this morning.
Okay, bueno, estamos aquí otra vez, verdad, con, uh, la inquietud de que queremos saber qué está pasando con nuestra escuela. Realmente estamos muy, eh, con coraje, estamos muy indignados porque creo que lo que hemos estado haciendo, nuestras firmas, todo lo que hemos juntado de la comunidad no se nos ha escuchado y no se nos ha tomado en cuenta. Mi pregunta es...
Today we are here because we are very upset, because sounds that the, all the information that we turn in, all the surveys, all the signatures didn't count. My question is...
Sabemos que hoy se va a tomar una decisión muy importante aquí con nuestra escuela. Estamos representando a nuestra escuela Ames para decirles que no se dejen engañar por el señor Maldonado. Nosotros sabemos que una escuela marina es una fábrica de deserción escolar, y solamente el cincuenta por siete por ciento de los estudiantes que entraron en año de 2013, eso es verdad, y si no me creen, no se graduaron, y si no me creen esto, chequen, chequen, lo revisen en la internet de CPS.
Today you are going to take a big decision, a very important decision. I'm here representing all the Ames parents to let you know that do not get intimidated by Alderman Maldonado. That marine school is a factory, is a drop, dropout factory. Only fifty percent of marine freshmen graduate from, from the school in 2013. If you didn't believe this fact, check out on the CPS website.
Felicitamos a los padres que vinieron con el señor Alderman Maldonado a dar sus testimonios, pero nosotros no queremos una escuela militar en nuestra comunidad, no la queremos, no estamos de acuerdo.
We congratulate all the parents from the school, uh, from Marine Academy. That's good that they are doing good, but in our community, Marine Academy is not welcome. Look for another, uh, place.
Escuchen a la comunidad de Ames y no a los políticos como el señor Maldonado, que solo quiere trabajar para sus intereses y no por los de la comunidad, que realmente necesitamos que nos escuchen.
Listen to the community, the Ames community, not the politics like Maldonado, that he is only, is only working for his own interests, but not for the community interest.
Desafortunadamente, es triste saber que nuestra escuela no está siendo escuchada, nuestra escuela Ames, nuestras, las escuelas alrededor, McAuley, Nixon, Falconer, Berry.
It's sad that you are not listening to the school community like Ames, McAuley, Berry, Nixon, and Falconer.
Yo les pido por favor que hoy en adelante, lo que se tome de decisión de la junta de educación sea para el beneficio de nuestros hijos. Los niños de la escuela Ames están esperando un sueño navideño, un pedido de que nuestra escuela se quede como una escuela de su comunidad.
Today you are going to make a decision and we hope that you are going to take the best decision. On behalf of Ames students, they are waiting for the results. Give, give them a gift, think about it, about your decisions that you are going to take today.
En nuestra escuela hay una clínica para nuestra comunidad, en nuestra escuela hay quince programas para nuestros niños después de la escuela, que es after school, como son el soccer, eh, música, banda, los niños van a paseos para programas de colegios. ¿Qué más quieren señores? ¿Qué más? Si les hemos venido a entregar firmas, hemos venido tocando puertas a los, a la comunidad, ¿por qué no nos escuchan? ¿Qué, qué, qué más quieren?
At Ames we have a clinic, we have several programs that our children benefit from them. We have football and many other programs, we have soccer. We are tired and we, uh, turn in lots of, uh, information. Why you are not listening to us?
Y por último quiero decirles que el señor Maldonado ha venido aquí con gente que no corresponde a la escuela Ames, a la comunidad, y no les ha traído ni un papel dando firmas que realmente son verdaderas. Eso es una mentira garrafal que él ha estado haciendo.
And today Alderman Maldonado brings lots of people that do not belong to Ames community, that do not belong in, that they do not live in his world. He is lying and bringing people that do not have interest, not even in the, in the 26th Ward or at Ames.
Y por último les quiero decir que no voten en favor de ponerle a la escuela militar, voten por los niños que necesitan la escuela de la comunidad. Ellos están deseosos de tener su escuela y queremos que este año, les pedimos que por favor consideren a nuestros niños, no a los padres, a nuestros niños que son los que están sufriendo, están frustrados, están enojados porque ellos no quieren una escuela militar. Y que estas navidades, lo que hay en sus corazones, el pedido que les hacen los niños es de que les dejen su escuela en paz como una escuela como de la comunidad. Por favor, que tengan felices fiestas, pero piensen en los niños antes de actuar.
I want to please ask you, don't take a vote in favor, uh, to put the Marine Academy into Ames. Listen to the community, think about the children's education. Give, uh, please today, they are, the students at Ames, they are frustrated, they are very upset about this whole issue. Give a gift today to them. Say no to Marine Academy at Ames.
Hello, again, my name is Emma Segura and thank you for having us again. Um, first of all, the survey that Maldonado just mentioned, um, I'm going to play it for you, for you guys could listen to what the survey is talking about.
Second saved voice message received on Saturday at seven zero five PM. Hello, the Chicago Public Schools recently sent a letter about moving your child to Ames Middle School, a gang-infested school at Armitage and Hamlin, up to two miles away. They say your school is too crowded, so the only choice is to move your child to Ames, a gang-infested school where all students must go through a metal detector every morning. There's a public hearing Monday, April fifteenth at Schur's High School at five PM. This is the only chance to voice opposition to moving your child to gang-infested Ames Middle School at Armitage and Hamlin, where all students must go through a metal detector every single morning. If you're going to attend this hearing, please press seven. If you'd like someone to follow up with a phone call to give you more information, please press eight. Thank you.
And also I want to say Alderman Maldonado's been trying to take Ames Middle School for two years. Since then, he refused to invitation to meet with Ames community to the decision. Everything he has done has been doors closed. Every movement has been about politics, not, but nothing about the education of our kids. Um, today you guys are going to vote in moving McAuley's seventh and eighth graders back to McAuley, Nixon, Falconer, and Berry, seventh graders to Calvin Park High School. Here's some details, the most recent event that the community hearing at McAuley and Calvin Park was on December eleventh and the twelfth has been issued. Most McAuley parents never informed, most Falconer, Berry, and Nixon parents were not informed either. Ames parents were definitely not informed. So CPS Chief Todd Connor, um, started December eleven on the community meeting about Ames was held by Mald- Alderman Maldonado. We do have about this meeting which has held July seventeenth at Casa Puerto Ricania, that is located on, on California, at a expected position edged on Ward twenty-six from Ames Middle School. No Ames was informed, when parents heard, they rushed to the meeting where Maldonado denied the microphone. CPS is now claiming this was the community meeting about Ames, but unfortunately, we never heard about it. So, um, um, since last time I've been, been here, I'm doing my best to keep my community informed truthfully. Are you doing, are you going to do the same today? Talk to, talk to us with the truth and not lies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no, there are no other speakers against Ames, so I'll proceed with the public participation list and I will proceed with the speakers that are here regarding the physical education policy.
Excuse me, I just want to say the reason there are no more speakers about Ames is because nobody knew this was happening until after the signups for the board meetings ended. Okay? We were not informed, the other side was.
I have no other names to call against.
Right, then, uh...
David.
Yes.
I just have a question for Barbara and her colleagues, has anybody from CPS, um, verified the so-called polls and surveys? We've heard over the last month, uh, both sides talking about how the community felt, we've had surveys, has anyone have from your office looked at the integrity of the surveys?
No, we've investigated, um, and I'd have to follow up on that and get that to you this afternoon, and we followed up to get a cost analysis of, of not only the process for verification of the signatures, but a cost analysis, we, we didn't- No teníamos a nadie en el personal que pudiera hacer eso. Y le daré esa información esta tarde en términos de cuál era el costo asociado.
No es el costo que estoy preguntando, es si...
¿Es un encuesta válida o no?
La encuesta, sí, si, quiero decir, tienes dos personas diciendo a ti sobre los sentimientos de la comunidad o dos partes y sentado aquí no tienes idea de cuál es el proceso de verificación o cuál es la precisión de estas llamadas encuestas.
Correcto, y era mi entendimiento de que eso sería conducido por alguien que tenía una experiencia en la verificación de los signos donde viven, etc. Si hay una mejor forma de hacerlo, certamente tomaría una recomendación de alguien en la board y podemos hacerlo antes del final de la semana.
Así que supongo que no hay manera de votar hoy porque tienes que aclarar esas cosas y luego si vas a verificar el signo de la comunidad de Ames, necesitas, para ser justos, necesitas verificar los signos de Maldonado también, para ser justos.
Gracias, ma'am. Gracias, gracias por su tiempo, gracias por hablar con nosotros. Estamos listos, por favor.
Gracias, señor presidente. En este momento me gustaría llamar a la oradora número ocho.
Vicepresidente Sharkey, creo que está aquí.
Gracias, señor presidente. Mister Sharkey, por favor, de la CTU.
Presidente Vitali, doctor Robert Bennett, gracias. Feliz cumpleaños a todos. En realidad quiero hablar contra los planes de CPS para los cambios en Ames. Creo que tengo un par de pensamientos. Look, aprecio que el alderman Maldonado, el jefe militar que habló, el padre de la escuela militar ganara la academia militar y el 26º award por razones que son contestadas, pero suficientes para ellos. Pero si aceptas esa lógica, tendrás 50 de estas cosas, tendrás una en cada award. Look, anoche cerraste cuatro escuelas en Austin, incluyendo Emmett y Key. Y ahora hay un grupo de personas que quieren una nueva escuela en Austin. Tu responsabilidad como board tiene que ser mirar el bienestar de este sistema y asegurarte de que no estás tomando decisiones incrementales basadas en presión o basadas en lo que se ve, lo que es google y brillante y nuevo que acaban de tomar el distrito en una dirección que es mal para el sistema público. Quiero decir, imagina a Mel De Marcos, pienso en ustedes así a veces, con una adicción a los zapatos, pero cada nueva pareja de zapatos que vio, necesitaba tenerlo por alguna razón particular que parecía buena para ella en el momento. No te conviertas en Mel De Marcos, quitando la confianza de este sistema basado en la adicción que tienen a las escuelas que parecen ser nuevas opciones y que pueden ser justificadas, incluso si no son justas. Los detalles importan. En West Logan Square, anoche moviste los 7º y 8º de la escuela de Thurgood Marshall para hacer espacio para Disney Magnet 2. Ahora hay real abarcamiento en muchas de esas escuelas. En McCallum, por ejemplo, ya es del 110%. Los estudiantes que venían de Ames añadirían un abarcamiento realmente grave allí. En Berry, Falconer y Nixon, donde proponías mover los 7º y 8º de Ames si los estudiantes no quieren ir a la nueva escuela de servicio militar, estás pidiendo enviarlos a un programa aún imaginario, que aún no existe en Calvin Park. Me hace preguntar, ¿hay una nueva escuela de charter que va a abrir allí, que va a proveer servicios para esos niños? No estoy seguro, pero hay más preguntas sin respuestas aquí que deberías estar cómodo con. Look, y si propones dejar que los estudiantes permanezcan en Ames, deberías dejar que los maestros permanezcan también, si decides ir con esto. Pero espero severamente que no, espero que respondan estas preguntas y voten contra, o al menos a delayar esta decisión en Ames hoy. Gracias.
Gracias, aprecio. No puedo ver sus zapatos, pero...
Gracias, señor presidente. Procederé con la lista de participación pública llamando a la oradora número 11, Marian Kaba. Se seguirá según los oradores designados para la política PE. Sería la oradora número uno, Rochelle Davis, seguida por la oradora número 10, Lorena Jasso, y luego la oradora número 27, Andrea Mularsek, por favor.